Good morning. It is Tuesday, March 3rd. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Shhh. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingville, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Ingaider, Fuentes, Wezar, Corresco, Corian, Labange, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Weston. Ten members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, if we could all rise, we'll be led in our flag salute by Ms. Martinez.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible in all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Madam Clerk, could we please go through the agenda?
First, Mr. President, their approval of the minutes to be approved.
Okay, Ofero moves, Martinez seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions.
Bonin moves, Buscaino seconds next.
There's requests to continue items 3, 20, and 35 to March 17th.
Without objection, that'll be the order.
Items 1 through 17 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that items 1, 8, and 17 may be received and filed inasmuch as the lien has been paid. Also, items 16 may be received and filed inasmuch as the ownership has changed. And for item number four, the lien amount should be reduced to $3,965.17 due to receipt of partial payment.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Do we have cards?
No cards.
Okay, let's prepare. Let's prepare to... Now, let's just... No disruptions. We do have a card on 8. Let's hold item 8. Let's vote on the remainder. Let's open the roll.
There's also a card on item 14.
Okay, so let's hold those items. So let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Let's move on to the next section and then we'll come back.
Items 18 through 32 are items which public hearings have been held.
Specials members, Mr. Labange.
On item 21, I could do this right now, Mr. Weston, ask that it be requested by Los Angeles World Airports to move the report back and that the entire matter be referred back to LAWA for the airport commissions for further review. Several Westfield tenants asked a variety of questions and they want the commission to go over that. Thank you.
Okay, so without... Mr. Bonin, seconds. Without objection on that item, that'll be the order. Members, any more specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Madam Clerk, that moves us where?
And, Mr. President, for items 18 and 19, the ordinances will be held over for one week if not... For... I'm sorry, till March 17th, if not reconsidered with 12 members.
Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Items 33 through 47 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
There are cards on items 38, 42, and 43.
Let's hold those items. Members, Mr. Corretts.
Actually, I missed item 19, but I have a question I wanted to ask on that, so...
Well, let us get back to that. Let me get through this section. Ms. Martinez.
Oh, there's cards going forward.
I couldn't hear you.
The items have been... Cards, I think you have cards for 42 and 43, but I wanted to call them special as well.
Okay, then we will... Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Mr. Buscaino.
Can we, for Mr. Sadio, send 38 and 39 forthwith, please? Urgent, urgent forthwith, according to the staff.
Without objection, we will send it forthwith. Mr. Corretts?
Yes, I'd like to...
In fact, hold on one second. Madam Clerk, where are we?
Mr. President, we're still on 33 through 47.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, where are we now?
Mr. President, for item 39, for that to go forthwith, for go urgent forthwith, council should vote on that.
Okay, we should vote on the urgent forthwith? On which item?
Yes, for item 39. 38 was called special for cards.
Okay, let's hold 39. Mr. Fuentes.
Be forthwith? Regular forthwith.
Rec... You got that? Okay, let's vote on the super. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
Okay, that brings us where? Oh, and now I'm back to Mr. Corretts.
Yes, I'd like to call number 19 special.
So didn't we already vote on it, so I have to...
Yes, we have to reconsider it, item 19.
Okay, so now we have a vote on reconsideration. Item 19, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
You have any cards on that?
No cards.
Okay, Mr. Corretts, what is it that you want to ask? Let's get it.
Do we have a representative from the City Attorney's Office to answer questions?
Do we...
On this item?
Okay, let's hold that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I stand here to pay tribute to Women's History Month, where we can honor the many
Ms. Martinez, would you... Are you...
Mr. President, I'd like to call item 25 forthwith accomplishments of women who have fought and won the right to an education, the right for Mr. Parks.
No problem. Are you ready for your presentation?
to vote, and the right to work with equal pay. Yes, I am.
One second.
Women like Susan B. Anthony, Harriet Tubman, Sonia Sotomayor, and Sally Wright have set
Yes, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, item 48 is an item which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now
an incredible standard. And in Los Angeles, we have incredible leaders that young women could admire.
before us? Do you have cards?
No cards.
As a young girl, I was fortunate to have many women who I could look up to and imagine the possibilities of filling their shoes one day.
Members, okay, no special. It's on item 48.
I challenge myself to live up to the legacy and to encourage the next generation of women
Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
to lead. We all must work together to encourage young women to succeed. Ten eyes. Because we must all remember that while a lot of the advancements have been made in
At this time, I'd like to defer to Ms. Martinez.
the name of civil rights, there is still a lot of work to be done. Women make up more than half of the country's workforce, yet still only make 77% of what men make. And for me, I have the daily reminder that I provide the voice for the 52% of the women who live in Los Angeles. The women who have served on this body before me accomplished great things, like Estelle Lindsay, who was the first woman elected to the city council, and Rosalind Wyman, who was instrumental in bringing the Dodgers from Brooklyn, and Joy Picas, who was active in developing policies and programs on behalf of working women, and how can we forget Wendy Gru, who was the first woman to advance in a mirror runoff. But this city is full of remarkable women. Every day, we see them walk these halls, look at the women who clean our homes and take care of our children, and everything they need to do to provide for their families. This is the reason why women should never make less and should not have to work just as hard to make ends meet to support their families. This is part of a national conversation that needs to be had. So while we must promote and teach students about the many contributions that women have made to our country's history, we must also instill in them the idea that women are just as valuable and work just as hard in this country. Colleagues, thank you for your work and your collaboration to further the rights of women and girls in your districts. We must help future generations understand that gender equality is a normal part of society. And maybe one day, we no longer have need a month to recognize and celebrate women's accomplishments, but come to recognize and understand them on a daily basis. Thank you very much, and with that, I'd like to introduce...
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
I'd like to introduce... Oh, Ada Sally, who's here from the Commission on the Status of Women to accept the certificate... I'm sorry, the recognition for Women's History Month.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Martinez. We're really honored to be with you all today because Women's History Month this year in particular represents not more... More than just honoring legacy of women in L.A., but building upon the challenge that they presented to us to do more for gender equity in L.A. And I say that because this year, and many of you council members are part of this challenge. You've been working with us, with Councilmember Martinez, leading the way to make policy and programming that is going to create more equitable environments and opportunities for women in the city of L.A. As you all know, we have a powerful commission on the status of women at this time, and I'm joined by my colleagues here today, Commission Vice President Rebecca Lindberg, Commissioner Irma Bernard Gibson, Commissioner Dallas Fowler, and Commissioner Nikki Mark, and we also have Commissioners Sari Zamora and Commissioners Jessica Postigo and Executive Director Farah Parker. We want to let you know that we have a team here within the city that is for you to help you advance gender equity in all you do. We are so honored and grateful for your partnership. As you know, we have a big Women's History Month ahead, and it includes the launch of some historic work on behalf of the women and girls of Los Angeles. And you know, a big gender study is on its way, and we'll look forward to partnering with you in the years to come to make the results of that study, create impact in policy and programming for new opportunities to make L.A. the most equitable city for women and girls. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like I said earlier this morning, we had a beautiful reception for our young artists across the city. We recognize well over 100 young women who are displaying their artwork here on the bridge to celebrate Women's History Month, and it couldn't have been possible without the leadership of these fabulous women who represent us on the Commission on the Status of Women. Thank you very much for everything that you do. And with that, I also want to recognize...
Oh, I was going to say, Mr. Labange once, so when you're finished. Mr. Labange?
Can you just give me just... We have one more presentation?
No, go right ahead.
Because we also want to take the opportunity to recognize Latina History Day, which is taking place next Friday, but we have friends from Hope here that would...
Wonderful, and welcome.
So with that, over the years, Hispanas Organized for Political Equality, also known as HOPE, has worked with the city council to dedicate one day of the year to the many accomplishments of Latinas in our city-state and our country. And I am proud to stand with HOPE's representatives in declaring Latina History Day in Los Angeles. As we also recognize March as Women's History Month, with Latina History Day, we remember the roles Latinas have played to contribute... That have contributed and play an instrumental part of our history here in the United States. Latinas today are breaking barriers and our pioneering fields our mothers had only dreamed of. This year, we saw Gina Rodriguez win a Golden Globe Award for her role in Jane the Virgin. Blanca Ramirez from La Puente aspired to set the world record for being the youngest female to run a marathon on all seven continents. She did this at the age of 12. And here locally, we have women such as Luz Rivas and Orme Cadenas, who have been inspiring and empowering women and young girls across the city to enter STEM fields. Latinas as a whole are making advances in society and in our city. In fact, the fact remains, too few children learn about the contributions of Latina pioneers past and present every day. So today, I stand here to remind young girls at home that there are women heroes from all walks of life. And I am proud to stand with HOPE, whose 24th Annual Latina History Day Conference will teach not only adults, but high school students about Latinas' important American history. This year's conference theme is "Reimagine Where..." Reimagine. Where conference participants reimagine the possibilities when empowered, savvy Latinas dominate booming industries and partake in civic discourse. This conference and others like it across America will give access to our diverse population more and give a more accurate description of the contributions that we have made to this country. It is my hope that tomorrow, we will remember these women's contributions. Thank you so much, and I'd like to ask this year's conference co-chairs Denise Campos and Evelyn Martinez to say a few words.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Evelyn Martinez, and I'm the area president for Wells Fargo for the Inland Empire. And on behalf of Wells Fargo, it's an honor to support HOPE and the organization's efforts to understand the economic factors that impact Latinas in the state. We very much recognize and value the longstanding positive impact that this organization has had on the community, and we're proud to work together to empower the Latino community to succeed financially. For 25 years, HOPE has remained dedicated to improving the education, political, and economic status of Latinas. HOPE has celebrated the historical contributions of Latinas in our society and has participated in the political process to guarantee a more representative, democratic government for Latinas and their communities. The proclamation of Latina History Day during Women's History Month memorialized the important role of Latinas in American society. Latinas are breaking the ceiling glass and are really venturing into areas that we haven't ventured in before. Latinas are business owners, executive in our country's largest organizations, civil servants, and also are appointed of powerful positions. One of our featured speakers this year is Sonia Nasario, an award-winning journalist whose stories tackled some of our country's toughest challenges: hunger, drug addiction, and also immigration, and has won some of the most prestigious journalist awards and book awards. Latina History Day celebrates amazing Latinas that are building a strong foundation for future generations. I'm going to hand the microphone over now to our co-chair, Denise.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, for recognizing HOPE along with the Commission on the Status of Women for Women's History Month. This year marks the 24th annual year that we celebrate the accomplishments of amazing Latinas, and SOCalGas is proud to be the title co-sponsor of this year's conference. At the conference, we will be highlighting that Latinas make... The contributions that Latinas make to our nation and discussing critical issues in our communities. We will feature Elisa Quintana, a research scientist with the SETI Institute and NASA Amis Research Center, where she works on the Kepler mission to help search for and characterize extrasolar panels, planets. Latina History Day will be on Friday, March 13th. There will be over 800 participants in attendance. I would like to personally invite all of the members of the council to join us in the celebration at the Biltmore. Also, a special thank you to councilmembers Price, Buscaino, and Corian for sponsoring women from their district. We encourage all members to do the same. And I wanted to mention that we're so honored today with the participation of former U.S. Treasurer Rosario Martin with us today. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, ladies and gentlemen. It's also a very important opportunity that we all have to recognize the contributions of women, and most especially of Latinas. So I congratulate you, my sister from HLI. Thank you for recognizing the work of women of all ages, of all walks of life, and encouraging all of us to continue our own path in making this city the greatest city in the nation. Thank you. That concludes our presentation.
Mr. Labange.
Two things. The first thing I want to say for the Secretary of the Treasury, you're the only signature that I could ever read on a note of the United States. And this morning, when Ms. Martinez led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, I heard your voice ring out, and I wanted to thank you for your service. But, Ms. Martinez, I thank you. When I first got here almost 14 years ago, there were five women on the city council. And my best friend was Janice Hahn, and she said... I said to her, and I don't know if I've told my colleagues this, I said, "There's 15 microphones, and we got one of them." Nuri, you got this one now, and hopefully more come in the future for the diversity. And I want to thank Lapita Sanchez, former deputy mayor, who probably ran off. I don't see Lapita. She was here. She's been a stalwart. She was one of the first people that I hired when I worked for Mayor Riordan years ago. So Rebecca, thank you, the Derby Dolls, and all the work they're doing, and in athletics, and Title IX. Where would be out of Title IX? Devin Scott from my high school, who's married to Brad Rosenheim, was the first girl to play on a boys' team in 1970 against Eagle Rock. They fought in the game, and then they started the GAA. Now, Title IX is so important for all those things. And lastly, the other day, I had a memorable moment. Was thanking a crew of tree trimmers, and Johnny Sanchez, one of the tree trimmers, urban foresters, got off, and he pulled out his iPhone, and he got a message, and it said, "Is this fellow related to Mary Louise Labange?", who was her teacher at Rowan Avenue School in East L.A.? My mom would have been 100 if she's still living today. And she had nice things to say about my mom. And my mom raised eight sons. So I have great respect for women because of what they do, and my wife, Bridget. So anytime we can honor people, and sometimes, and especially that little paper across the street says, "I honor people," or "talk," or "boost," you boost people. Go, girl, go. You do that. And what, Janice Hahn used to yell, "Girl power"? Boost people! And that's the thing that moves the city, and moves the country, and moves the life of all. So congratulations, and, Nuri, congratulations to you and your great leadership in this organization and this event. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Ms. Martinez to close?
No. Thank you, Mr. Labange, for the kind words. We love you, too.
All right, let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so very much for everything that you do. Now, we're going to take up items 42 and 43 together. I have Eric Previn. We're going to take them both up together. So, Mr. Previn, I'm going to give you three minutes, and Mr. Walsh. For... Mr. Previn's on 42 and 43, and Mr. Walsh is on 42.
Thank you, and good morning, Council President Weston. It is Eric Previn, a resident from CD2, and also a candidate in today's election for the council district race in CD2. So hopefully, everybody will get out and vote today.
Stay on item.
Yes. Today, obviously, is Women's History Month. We're commemorating that, and I am a tremendous supporter of this idea. I believe, as many of the council members have articulated, that women in America should be treated equally to men and should be provided wages that are consistent with what their members of the opposite sex also receive. So I very much appreciate that the council is taking time to identify this. I have admired the steadfast attention to this over the years. Item number 43 is Latina History Day. Y fui el presidente del Circolo Espanol en la escuela secundaria, and I am very happy to say that this is an acknowledgement of some of the cultural aspects of Los Angeles that also require amplification. And it's worth noting that at the county level today, they're also doing a nice commemoration of Women's History Month and Latina Day. So thank you very much for doing that, and thank you for doing it on Election Day. I think it was so nice to see Ms. Martinez down here, front and center, you know, and now we have a sort of an equity situation because you've invited me, in a rare twist, for three minutes to also speak about these issues. And these issues really are, even though we're talking about acknowledging women and history, you know, the underpinning here, as I identified, is kind of a civil rights story, Mr. Weston. And I know that you have done certainly more than most in civil rights here at Los Angeles City, and I've asked you, as you know, to make my appearance today.
Stay on the issue. Come on, Mr. Previn.
Well, this is it. You're going to get a chance to shut me down, sir, because I'm asking to be exposed at the same level that you expose yourself and the other members of the community.
That has nothing to do with the item. Thank you, Mr. Previn.
You're welcome.
Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, thank you.
Item 42.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, no longer hacked, and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Well, this is very important, but I think we must make a change in this racist city and this racist city council and the racist mayor. Let's change the name of this from Women's History Month to White Women's History Month. And I want... I challenge any black woman in this city to see that... Say that they're treated equally to white women, or even Asian women, or even Hispanic women. We... Black women are at the bottom of the totem pole, and we cannot allow this to continue. They've got these three Uncle Toms up here, or Tio Tomassos.
Stay on the subject. Stay on the subject.
The subject is changed. Please amend this from Women's History Month to White Women Only History Month.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we do have 12 members now. And I think there's some items, ordinances, and some reconsider... No, you're disrupting. Your cards weren't in in time. So anyway, Madam Clerk?
Yes, item 18, reconsideration.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now that item is before us. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next, Madam Clerk?
Item two, called special for cards.
Good item two. Mr. Previn and Mr. Wallace, I believe?
I thank the council for accommodating me. I'm George Wallace. I'm appearing as counsel for the property owner on item number two. This matter only came to me late in the day on Friday. My request to the council would be if we could continue this for approximately 30 days. This would give the opportunity, if there is to be a protest, to put it in an orderly fashion, or, as is frankly more likely, to come to a resolution with the city that will not require the recording of this lien. So if the council could accommodate us with that continuance, be much obliged.
Okay, thank you. We'll get to that. Mr. Previn, item two. Mr. Previn passes, and it's Mr. Corian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that we continue this matter for 30 days at the request of the speaker.
Okay, so, Mr. Wallace, we're going to continue that for 30 days. Madam Clerk, that'll bring us to what date? Actual date?
Due to the council recess, that brings the council... That would bring it to April 14th.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's vote. Oh, no, we're just continuing everything. Okay, let's move on. Mr. Corretts? Are you...
Sir.
Good morning. I thank the council for accommodating me. I'm George Wallace. I'm appearing as counsel for the property owner on item number two. This matter only came to me late in the day on Friday. My request to the council would be if we could continue this for approximately 30 days. This would give the opportunity, if there is to be a protest, to put it in an orderly fashion, or, as is frankly more likely, to come to a resolution with the city that will not require the recording of this lien. So if the council could accommodate us with that continuance, I'd be much obliged.
Okay, thank you. We'll get to that. Mr. Previn, item two. Okay. Mr. Previn passes, and it's Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to request that we continue this matter for 30 days at the request of the Speaker.
Okay, so, Mr. Wallace, we're going to continue that for 30 days. Madam Clerk, that'll bring us to what date, actual date?
Due to the council recess, that brings the council, that would bring it to April 14th.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's vote. Oh, no, we're just continuing everything. Okay, let's move on. Mr. Corretts? Are you?
Yes. I have a question about number 19.
Go ahead.
If, I'm not sure who is answering that question. I assume--
Do we have the county council? There is.
Okay. And the question is, how do we not have potential for conflict of interest with this contract? Does the panel the city attorney has retained to defend itself on development issues have restrictions on the kinds of cases they can handle otherwise in their practice? So there's some concern, it's been expressed to me, that the people we hire may then, working for us, learn our legal strategies, and then later decide to work for developers, or have worked for developers in the past and return to that activity.
So, good morning, Assistant City Attorney Tim McWilliams, and I can respond to that. So, as with the case, when you hire, when anybody hires an attorney, that attorney is obligated, under ethical rules, to disclose any conflict of interest that they have at that point in time. And so certainly, that has taken place, first of all. Secondly, throughout the relationship we have with these outside firms, if a conflict materializes during that relationship, they're obligated to disclose that to us. And if a conflict arises, we have the option of either waiving that conflict, which requires that we come back to you and present that to you for waiver, or not waiving. If it's not waived, then that firm would have to stop representing the city. So I don't know if that answers the question in--
It answers it in some circumstances. What if a firm worked for us and then decided, okay, now we know the city's process and their approach, now we can turn around and represent developers? Do we have anything in our contract that prevents that in any way?
No. If someone goes to work for the city, representing the city, we don't have them contractually bound to forever thereafter, even after they're no longer working for the city, not represent developers. No, that's not in the contract.
Could we ask?
But there is an ongoing obligation, as, since, once they represent the city, even though they no longer represent us at some point in the future, there's a continuing obligation, ethical obligation, to not be adverse to the city on matters in which, while they were working for the city, they learned information that they could then use against the city. If that situation arises, they'd still have to come back to us and request a waiver.
So would that be true even if it applied just to the city's general legal approach and strategy, as opposed to just one specific case?
I'm not sure I fully understand the question.
Well, the question is, I'm sure the city has some legal strategies that we apply, not just in one particular case, but a general approach. And a firm having worked for us would have more of a sense of how we operate, and could use that to our disadvantage if they then moved on to represent developers.
Correct. So the ethical obligation still exists. If they learned information while representing us, including the way we do business, our legal strategies, if they learned that, they can't thereafter use that against the city without getting a waiver from the city.
And presumably, attorneys would not take that chance in terms of their future success as a firm to violate that.
Well, presumably not, because if the city on our own recognizes that that conflict situation has arise, has arisen, if they haven't disclosed it to us, we have the ability to raise it ourselves, and certainly, we assume that they have an interest in protecting their reputation, as you say.
But other than that, we've put that kind of firewall presumably into our contract, in terms of conflicts of interest that we can spot at the time.
Right. That actually doesn't need to be in the contract. Those are ethical rules that every attorney in the country, and certainly within the state, has to abide by, even if it's not in the contract.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the-- Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. It's already been taken up in committee. Public comment has been satisfied. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, I'm going to call Mr. Walsh and Donald Galaz for general public comment. Come on, sir. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
How you doing? My name is Donald Galaz. I'm from the National and International Brotherhood of Street Racers, and I'm the spokesman for our organization. I'm also the unofficial spokesman for the Street Racers of Los Angeles. I come to the council this morning to ask if any and all motions that are going to be placed in, as action items towards us, or laws that are going to be intervoked, be tabled as of this moment, pending a meeting that the Street Racers of Los Angeles would like to have with the entire City Council, the mayor, the chief of police, and also the sheriff's department. We have equipment readily available to us to provide a safe alternative for the illegal street racing problem that is happening here in the city of Los Angeles. Therefore, the funds would not have to be allocated by the city for these particular parcels, or these particular pieces of equipment that we have to facilitate this activity. Now, in the port of Los Angeles, there's empty parcels of property in which we can obtain just a piece of it, where we can deter this illegal activity here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, Jay Walsh Confidential, you hacked me on Friday. I got out of it later Friday. Vote no on City Charter Amendments 1 and 2. They are racist. They aim at black people and trying to take the vote away from them. No on City Charter 1 and 2. There was a big rally here of all the, mostly black people. Chief Parks did a great job. No on City Charter Amendment 1 and 2. It gives Herb Weston and all the City Council, and the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, one and a half years of unelected term. Vote no on City Charter 1. You don't convince people to vote by eliminating opportunities. Vote no on City Charter Amendments 1 and 2. Vote no. It is racist. It is, and no one is more vile than Whitey Weston, the man behind it. And who, Budweiser beer and Lucky Strike--
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, now we'll go to item 8. Mr. Paul Morales and Mr. Walsh. Item 8. Then, Mr. Walsh, item 8.
John Walsh, blogging at the non-hacked right now, Jay Walsh Confidential. Item 8 is nuisance abatement costs. We're not talking about the City Council when we say nuisance abatement. We're talking about a lien of $1,200 because the incident, because the white guy, the black man who owns it unfortunately lives east of La Brea. If it's a white Jewish person who owns the property west of La Brea, they don't have to pay any fines. That's the way things work here. And I'm a Jew. HollywoodHighlands.org, or SaveOurCityElections.com.
You're off topic. Thank you very much. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Item 36, Mr. Previn and Mr. Gus Daniel. I didn't see you. So, Mr. Gus and Mr. Previn, we are on item 36. Yes.
And, Mr. President, just for the record, for item 8, that item was received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay.
Good morning. I would think that everything for CD4 should be waited, since we have a termed-out council member.
No, let's stay on there. Oh, no, you know what? My bad.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. I think everything for CD4 and CD8 should be placed on hold until we find out who is the future of CD4 and CD8. On Sunday, I was listening to a candidate talk about water conservation. I was very impressed, and I think Tomas O'Grady's opinion should be heard on CD4 and all conservation issues. If you want to know what those of us in the conservation world feel, something like this, it's very important, water conservation. We really should hear what CD4 candidates for the termed-out Mr. Labange think. And I greatly respect any sort of conservation efforts, and I greatly respect the opinion of future council member from CD4, Tomas O'Grady. Thank you.
Mr. Previn.
Honorable Council President, it is Eric Previn from CD2 in Studio City. And, sir, I would like to ask a point of order, if I may, sir. Point of order. Yes. The point of order is, item 19 that was addressed by Mr. Corretts--
You are not--
There's no point of order.
That's why I called it point of order.
You're not on item, just stay on 36, Mr. Previn.
Right, but it was my understanding that in a public meeting, the Roberts rules and the point of order is how you communicate with the council president.
Item 36, that's the item we're on.
But item 19 and Mr. McWilliams, they gave new information.
Okay, thank you. Your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Previn. I asked you three times. Let's prepare to vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
38. We'll move to 38. I think that's Miriam Fogler. Ms. Pierman, Donna Pierman. And Mr. Gus.
I see a lot of people that are homeless, so I don't think the affordable housing works. I think we should keep, I think you would encourage people to buy home, buy property and make it reasonably priced, so that people could afford to rent. I think it's a real bunker. And the problem I'm having is that you people just spend, spend, you don't, you don't care about our budget or anything, you know?
She's not talking about this item.
Okay, Miriam.
We're talking about the affordable, how much it's costing the city. You don't do anything--
No, read the item, dear, and then you'll, I mean, Ms. Fogler, and just stick to that.
I thought it is the affordable housing.
Go on, Miriam.
Okay, I thought this is about, oh, it's about pipeline project. Is that what you're talking about here?
Just keep going, stay on it.
Okay. I don't know, but money might be going, not be going in the right way here, so the people might not be getting what they should be getting. So I think it should be audited. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pierman.
This Donna, I see a lot of money being spent over here. $3 million in housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. Certainly, that can come from private. $20,000 McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act, we don't even say which ones are being assisted, whether, see, these might be people who are already getting a lot of different items, and they might be throwing in more items. Basically, what you're doing is, most of these items, if you have affordable housing, basically what they'll do is you give a short little spot for the affordable housing and assistance, a little bit here and there for these homeless. And basically, what you get is, most of the people in these affordable housings are not affordable housing, and what they do is they give it rent up to the moon, and so that those people don't mind to have that 5% of their housing being affordable housing. And basically, I just want to say that this is just way too much money, and no really transparency exactly how it's going to be done, where it's going to be done. And so you just want to throw a lot of money, money with a little bit of word is possible. So I'm against it. I'm against it. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel, before you talk, stay, I'm going to go quickly to after this item. I'll be calling you again.
Okay, good stuff.
So stay close.
Good morning. It seems to me that the city of Los Angeles has two options for homeless assistance. We build housing that's not really affordable for the homeless, or we send the LAPD to Skid Row, and we murder them. See, that's what--
Stay on the subject.
Yeah, I am. I'm saying, we, this is not a genuine way to help homeless people. This is not homeless assistance. The city of Los Angeles doesn't really care about homeless assistance, because they build housing that is not affordable for the homeless, that doesn't provide the requisite help that homeless people need, or the LAPD murders them. That's the type of assistance that we offer homeless people, walking distance from this building. We need better solutions, we need better answers from the city of Los Angeles. This city has a history of murdering homeless people.
Stay on the subject.
I am. I'm talking about homeless assistance.
You're getting a little out there, Daniel. Bring it home.
Well, it's a very important day. Homeless assistance is relevant, and this is not the assistance that should be the subject of your focus. Six cops murdering--
No, come on, Daniel, on this subject. That's now your way out. Last warning.
Okay. Homeless assistance is an element of conservation in communities. Mr. Weston actually does a very good job of that in a very needed community. And let me just finish the sentence. Let me just finish the sentence. Just, let's get, let's get better types of assistance for homeless people, rather than murdering them. Thank you.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, Daniel, and Donna, you could begin to come up as well. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, Daniel, and then Donna Pierman, general comment. Mr. Gus, and then Ms. Pierman. Yes, sir.
So we have a seven-minute video of this jackass Officer Duarte of the LAPD standing over us the other day, because we didn't want to stand during adjourning motions. And so the video was given to Internal Affairs at LAPD. Guess what? Not standing when you don't want to stand is a form of free speech, and we have the right not to be harassed by Officer Duarte. We're going to give the video, seven and a half minutes, this asshole stood over us because we didn't want to stand in protest. This is specifically why Amendment 1 and Amendment 2 should be voted no. Herb Weston is a great guy. He should be reelected handily. But Cindy Montanez coerced city staffers to work on the Roal-Boca Negro recount. We have to replace her after 18 months. The LAPD doesn't let you sit if you don't want to sit. They murder black people living on the street. This is why we need a change in this, in this area. Tomas O'Grady for CD4. Cindy Montanez for CD6. Anyone but Weezer for CD14. People, if you're sick of it, vote for change.
Thank you, Mr. Gus. Ms. Pierman, general public comment.
Hi, this is Donna Pierman. I had a pile of pamphlets, I forgot to bring it, all saying yes on 1 and 2. Nothing, I no on 1 and 2. It's undemocratic. They're doing it on purpose, the City Council, and Lucky Strikes and Budweiser. Want to make sure that you vote yes on it. Vote no on 1 and 2 ads. Anyway, go to SaveOurElections.org, and or find out from Read L.A. Voters, Being Plagued by Politicians' Rolls 22515. Uncorporated cities will lose our voice. Elections for, for, elections for incorporated cities, elections will be costly, will lose our voice, especially women, minorities, youth, elderly, poor. It will ruin the neighborhood council. If we can't, if you like your candidates, then you might want to vote for it. But if you are indifferent, or don't like the candidates that you have, vote no on 1 and 2. This is, that's, it will put it all together. It will ruin the elections. It will make it difficult. Please, people, vote no on 1 and 2.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, now we're going to go back to, is that item 45? Mr. Walsh, item 45? Is that now, or is it 9? Okay, so then we just stay in general public comment. Is there item 14? And we've continued 14, but we're still taking--
You called me for 45.
Hold on, I've just been explaining, we already acted on that, Mr. Walsh. Now, what do we--
Mr. President, there's a request to continue item 14 to March 17th.
Okay, so we'll go back to general public comment. We'll continue that 14 without objection. Mr. Previn, Miriam Fogler, general public comment. Mr. Previn, Miriam Fogler, general public comment. No applause. Mr. Previn, Ms. Fogler, go right ahead.
Yes, it's Eric Previn. And sir, it is a violation of the Brown Act to have a city attorney come up and add new information to item 19, which is what happened today when Mr. Coretts interviewed him on the point about a developer panel of attorneys, which is a conflict of interest. The answers from the attorney were not appropriate. I should have had an opportunity to address that for two minutes because I signed up on the item. The item has been agendized differently three different times before three different entities. The Budget and Finance Committee, the City Council on one day. There are other conflicts with these panels, and this is completely inappropriate. And I don't know what to say beyond that the City Council needs to not look away from this. Mr. Coretts's instinct was correct. This is not in the interest of neighborhood organizations, residents and such. And there's a complete unlevel playing field here. If we allow folks who have deep pockets to fund city litigations against residents, we don't want that, sir. You didn't do a fair job of agendizing it through this process. It needs to be held and continued. And it's item 19, 14-1606 is the case file number.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Ms. Fogler. Okay, your time's expired, Ms. Fogler. As she's coming up, Mr. Price, you wanted to reconsider what item?
Item 4 and item 11, Mr. President, please, without objection.
Okay, let's vote on reconsideration on those two items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Fogler.
My score is plugged in here. I have to come down here, and I don't want to lose our election vote no on one and two. I don't want you people getting a one and a half more year in term in office and getting more pension. We got to vote this down, folks. They're not representing you. They're representing themselves. So vote no on one and two. We have to vote this down. They're playing... They're playing you. L.A. voters being played by politicians. 22515. Go to LA City Elects... Save Our... There was a man named David Holsman wrote in the Daily News, 22515. L.A. voters being played by the politicians down here. Herb Weston wants to become supervisor in 220. That's 2020. That's why he's doing this. You need to vote down one and two. That's what it says in this article. Go look it up, and you'll see it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. On the two items that we considered, it was, Mr. Price, 4 and 11, is my understanding, that we reconsidered. You want to continue those for 30 days?
Thirty days, Mr. Price.
That will bring us to what day on those two items, Madam Clerk?
April 14th.
Okay, if I could have Mr. Peter Fogler and Mr. Herman. Do we have a Peter?
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the American people, it's voting day today, and I'm telling the world today, vote no for Herb Weston in District 10. Vote no for Mr. Kukorian, who turned his chair because he's afraid of the American, who stands here to tell him, "You genocidize hypocrite." And then I look over to Mr. Weezer's seat. He's still not here because he fears Gloria Molina. Vote tonight. Vote today. And I do say, Mr. Speaker, I have the floor. So all of you today who decide to make a decision on the terms, vote no on Amendment 1. Vote no on Amendment 2. Because Batman was at the LAPD Police Commission under the name Africa, who was brutally killed because he was a homeless, disabled person, and Batman had to come and tell the world, "Jerks, jerks."
Mr. Fogler? Mr. Fogler? No, I don't see him? Okay. So that concludes general public comment.
Mr. President, first, there's a request to send item 38 forthwith.
Without objection.
A special one motion has been circulated. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the CAO and DOT have determined that the DOT will be unable to meet its payroll for the next payroll period, which will occur during the council recess. Immediate action is required to transfer $250,000 to DOT overtime account in order for the department to make payroll during the council recess. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, so, no, no, relax. I'm going to take public comment on this item. So please, bring your cards forward. Okay, now we're voting on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now, uh, who did I see? Mr. Gus, did you fill out a card, followed by Mr. Walsh? One minute each.
Thank you for this extra minute. Part of my concern is that the Department of Transportation can't meet its payroll. How can you be voting on this or moving this forward if the department itself doesn't have the money to pay the people that work for the department? Let's not try to usher in these things if the numbers don't work. You see, nobody's really listening. On Election Day, they don't want the people at home to hear. The Department of Transportation cannot meet its payroll, but they're trying to usher this in. It's so typical. It's so typical. And they make everybody rush so that we can't even take a deeper look at it. But where's the money? Where's the money for this initiative? They want to get it in there. They want us to be quiet. They want us to sit down. That's why no on one, no on two.
Okay, Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org moved here in 1976. I never thought I'd hear what I just heard now. You're sneaking it in. This is the first time this has ever happened. The department... This department, I believe it's Transportation, cannot make its payroll this month. In other words, this city is bankrupt. Where is punk-ass Zandheiser? And I'm telling you right now, all the mayor is interested in... He's not interested in making the payroll. All he's interested in is playing Monica Lewinsky to Glenn Dake's gay lover's Clinton.
He is not talking about this item.
The city is bankrupt. The city cannot make its payroll. You said that. I didn't say that. That is a shame. Where is the story on this? On Election Day, you just said you can no longer make your payroll in the city, and all you want to do is get an extra year and a half election. Vote no on one and two.
Ms. Pierman? Mr. Previn, you're closer?
Yes, it is Eric Previn, a city resident from District 2 and a candidate in the CD2 election today. The Department of Transportation is critically important to the city's functioning, and the idea that we are not able to make payroll is of great concern. And I have tried to raise some of the issues regarding the Parking Violation Bureau's activities. And frankly, I would like to submit into the record something that was in response to a request for hearing not to pay a delay fine, just like we see on these liens all the time. And the city found in my favor that some of the fees were erroneously calculated by the provider, who is Xerox ACS Solutions. Sir, this is a group that lobbies beaucoup bucks through this operation. We need to get... And five or six Xerox employees wrote this particular document, which is a stunning legal argument in favor of appalling tactics and characteristics.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pierman. Ms. Pierman, no, your time's expired.
This is the totally wrong thing we're doing. You can't meet the payroll, and then you put this at the last minute because this is all done by the council members. Don't reelect the council members who offer one and two. Vote no on one and two. And I'm against this because you're just going...
She is not talking about this item.
You just want more on the payroll. That's wrong, wrong, wrong.
Okay, now, did we have Ms. Fogler? Were you on special one in Batman?
Can you start my clock again? I just got up here.
No, why don't you just go on, Ms. Fogler?
Okay, can I have my time back?
Speak on the subject.
Yeah, but you're taking my...
Okay, Ms. Fogler, last time. You want to speak on this subject or not?
You shut my... You shut my mic off.
No, your time is over. Thank you. Mr. Herman, come on up. Miriam, no, you had to stay on the subject. Your time has expired. Sergeant, bring up the next speaker. Your time is done. Come on, Mr. Herman, let's go. Just come on, let's go. Miriam, take a seat. Miriam, you are disrupting the meeting. Mr. Herman is disrupting the meeting. Ms. Fogler, you're disrupting the meeting. Sergeants, help her find her seat. No, no, your time's expired. Yeah, Mr. Fogler, why don't you help her? No, you got... Sergeants, if we could just help her sit down. Miriam, your time's expired. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, she literally is disrupting the meeting.
And you are disrupting the meeting. No, she's already... Her time is gone. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, come on. Mr. Herman, come on and speak on the subject.
Residents of Los Angeles, we are all the victims of the illegal process of transportation not to have open for transparency a budget. The same way elected officials dip into a budget that they say they do checks and balances for. But transportation cannot succeed without a budget, so the city will and does and should not ask for any more measures or bonds. Batman's back today as he films all of you Angelenos because today is a very special day about transportation. If it wasn't for Rosa Parks, we wouldn't have transportation without a budget that does not discriminate Batman's.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is expired on this item. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Despite the braying idiocy we've just heard for the past couple of minutes, this issue is not quite as it has been described. This is mainly a cash flow issue for the department, and it is necessitated by the fact that we are going into recess on Friday, and it needs to be taken care of before then. I would like to get a better explanation from DOT and CAO on why the timing of this has come up. So I'm going to ask that we continue this item until tomorrow.
Before we go there, are they here right now?
They are not.
Okay, then...
So we can continue this until tomorrow. We can still address the issue. But it's also important to note...
You're disrupting the meeting.
This is not DOT asking for additional money. This is DOT asking for authorization to transfer within the department.
You know what? I want the CAO here now. I'm going to hold this. We're going to go to the other special. Okay, now, so we will continue it till tomorrow. Mr. Kukorian?
Mr. President? Mr. President, I'm sorry. I'm having a little trouble hearing the president because of the shouting that's coming from the audience.
It's being disrupted.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. President...
Yes.
There is continuing disruption, particularly by Mr. Armando Herman. There is a continuing disruption of this meeting, and it really needs to stop. I just wanted to rise in support of Mr. Bonin's suggestion. Again, to the point of these speakers, there is no shortage of money in the Department of Transportation. The Department of Transportation is not incapable of making its payroll. The city is not bankrupt. This is simply a transfer from the salaries-as-needed account to the overtime account. But the truth is, the Department of Transportation should have done this on a timely basis. They should have reported this to the council on a timely basis. This should not be considered under Rule 23. And so I very much respect and appreciate the suggestion that we continue it till tomorrow so that the department residents could be here and we can consider this as a properly agendized item.
Okay, so it will be continued till March 4th. Okay, that brings us to... Don't we have Mr. City Attorney another special?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the event organizer has notified the DOT and city staff that a special event permit is necessary for the Amundson 10... I'm sorry, Amundson 12K trail run on this Saturday. Immediate action is required due to the impending recess to issue the permit before Saturday. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, let's vote on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr... You're disrupting the meeting. Mr... In fact, sergeants, one more outbreak. We're going to have to have people sit outside or what have you because they're not going to have them disrupt the meeting anymore. So, Mr. Bloomingfield, would you like to start off?
Sure. Simple motion. These folks had were planning a trail run. They were told at one point by the Department of Transportation everything was fine. They then found out yesterday that, no, they don't... They can't get the special permit, that it needs to be a city council action. That's why we have a necessity because they've already made their plans. They've already sent their materials. The run is happening this Saturday. We're talking about the end of victory, the street. It's not a problem from the local district perspective. Everybody supports this kind of thing. Unfortunately, we have to take this council action to make it happen, but it is not a controversial issue.
We will see. Okay, Mr. Walsh? Mr. Gus? Ms. Pierman? Ms. Fogler? Mr. Herman?
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. I repeat, on the previous special amendment under the Brown Act...
No, on this one. On this... This one. On this one. Okay, he's not speaking. Last warning, Mr. Walsh. Stay on this one.
Special motion two. First of all, there are too many of these special sneak 'em in amendments, just like the previous bankruptcy motion. I don't care about the trail run. If you didn't have your shit together to put on the trail run, I'm not going to give you the money, sneak it in here. That's why we are now technically bankrupt in the city of Los Angeles because you didn't pay the salaries of the Department of Transportation. And on the trail run...
He is not talking about this item. Stay on the subject.
Thank you, bankrupt, but it is part of this absolute total mess. No on one and two.
Mr. Gus?
The reason why it's controversial is because they're sneaking it in right under the gun. When we make a mistake, they take away our speaking time. When a constituent with a special event makes a mistake, they get a break. They ask for clearance. We don't get clearance because it's like a little community activity. But that's unfair. It's simply unfair. It could have been on the agenda today. It could have been on the agenda yesterday, you know, on Friday, and at the last minute they find out that this doesn't fly. How can that be? How could it not have been put on the agenda? We're just now finding that out? If this is wrong with their event, what else is wrong with the event? What else are they going to sneak under the wire? I happen to like Mr. Bloomingfield. Nothing against him, but this is just one of those little shady things that we can't tolerate. I'm glad when common sense per fails. On the previous special, no on one, no on two.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Pierman?
Yeah, this is Donna. Just shows another inefficiency done by the city council and whoever was supposed to look at these items and make sure that everything was in order. whoever was supposed to look at these items and make sure that everything was in order. Of course, they're not going to do that because they're too busy running for reelection.
No, you're off subject. Stay on the subject.
Trial run. You give special breaks to these people, you don't give any special breaks anywhere else. That's probably because somewhere you're probably getting kickbacks on this. So vote no on one and two.
No, your time is expired. Come on, Ms. Fogler, followed by Mr. Herman.
Okay, let me tell you, I got cheated on the time, and I want it back for today's session.
Look, you better stay on this subject.
I'm demanding it.
Okay, she—you're disrupting the meeting. Mr. City Attorney?
Thing is, I do not believe that we should be bankrupting a city, so that's why we can't move the elections, vote no on one and two.
No, your time is expired. Mr. Herman? Mr. Herman, no, because you— no, you are not on subject. You are not on subject. You must move from the podium. You must— Mr. Herman, come on.
Mr. President, she is disrupting the meeting, and as is Mr. Herman yelling from the center aisle.
In fact— Mr. Speaker, as you see, as you threw the lady away from the podium with thirty-nine seconds—
You're not on the subject. In fact, you know what, Mr. City Attorney, he's unbelie— would you stop his time? He's unbelievably disrupted.
May I proceed? May Batman proceed?
You stay on the subject.
So when you don't allow transparency for the material and matter of public interest, you are denying us the process which we must know and reflect on the agenda in which you have not produced in the back of this court. So, Mr. Speaker, as you—
He is not talking about this item.
Again, now, if that's your last warning, thank you. Okay, thank you. So let's prepare to— Sergeants, his time's expired. Turn the time off, the sound off. Okay, let's vote on this. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
What's before this body?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They're posted, they're referred.
That clears the desk.
Announcements? Announcements? Yes, Mr. Labange?
I got several thousand emails from all the trees in Griffin Park. They love the rain. It's been a beautiful rain. I want to thank the heavens for the rain.
Could all members rise? Mr. Kretz? Could all in the chambers rise for adjournment motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that we adjourn today in memory of David Chappelle, who passed away earlier this month at the age of ninety-four. Holocaust survivor, he was a tremendous civic patriot and philanthropist. He and his wife, Phela, made extraordinary important donations to institutions for Jewish education and Holocaust education. He was born in Poland in 1921, and most of his family was murdered in the Holocaust, though he and a brother and sister survived. David not only escaped from Poland, but he then joined the Polish army under the Russians and fought the Nazis throughout the rest of the war. After the war, he would meet and marry Phela. They came to the United States in 1950, later moved to L.A. In 1955, he and his brother Nate and brother-in-law Max Webb created Chappelle Industries, a construction and real estate company that had a huge impact on the local landscape, building more than 65,000 homes in California. He and his wife made major contributions to the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum in Washington, D.C., the Simon Wiesenthal Center, Friends of the Israel Defense Forces, a number of institutions in Israel, and he was a member of the Simon Wiesenthal Center Board of Trustees. And those are just some examples of his lengthy activism and leadership and many contributions to humanity. He is survived by his wife, Phela, their three children, Rochelle, Benjamin, and Irvin, and great grandchildren and grandchildren, and he will be greatly missed.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, members. I don't know if you've heard, Alex Baum, ninety-two years young, the greatest of all advocates for cycling in Los Angeles passed this weekend. He truly is a remarkable individual. He was also a victim of the Holocaust survivor, was in a concentration camp, and also was a member of the Friends Resistance. As he—in professional life, was a caterer, but he loved cycling. In 1984, he was very involved with organizing the cycling and wanted to get the Vellodrome out there in the valley, but it wasn't to be. It was down in Dominguez Hills. But Alex was the first voice for cycling in Los Angeles in modern times. He organized with Mayor Bradley the first bicycle advisory group, and then he subsequent mayors, including Mr. Riordan, and Mr. Han, Mr. Virago, now Mr. Garcetti was the key advocate for cycling. He truly was a wonderful man, and he used to sit over on that side of council anytime he came to City Hall and just check in with us and our deputies. I'm proud to say we named a bridge after him in our district, on Las Feliz Boulevard in the Los Angeles River, because that was such a difficult, difficult issue. And to credit that, because I know Mr. Bonin, who's a great advocate for all, it was Dave Freeman who helped us when he was at Water and Power get that bridge approved over near the transmission there, because that was a connector for the River Bike Way that brought it into your district, Mr. O'Farrell, and your district when it finishes in, and the good work that you're doing, Mr. Sidya. Alex Baum, a great American, a great advocate, a great friend of Los Angeles, a great friend of cycling. I know the Department of Transportation, Michelle Maury, was very close to him. We remember him, and I know Mr. Bonin has a few words he would like to say.
Mr. Bonin on the subject.
Thank you. I need to echo what Mr. Labange said. It was heartbreaking to read about Alex's passing the other day. He was—a—he was a giant. I remember when I first started working for Ruth Galanter, one of the first assignments I had was to deal with this persistent, heavily accented man who kept coming to the rope, who kept coming to the door, and who was absolutely determined to transform the landscape of mobility here in Los Angeles. He— an incredibly sweet and kind and absolutely determined man. He—he's sort of the godfather of the active transportation movement in Los Angeles, and he leaves a rich legacy, which just now is really starting to come to fruition in this city. And I think he probably died proud of what he was beginning to see happen here in the city. So may he rest in peace and cycle forever in the sunlight of the spirit.
Thank you. But wait, Mr. Labange, if that's an announcement?
—services of Mr. Baum.
Okay.
One will be tomorrow, 1:30, at the Santa Monica synagogue on 18th Street. And Santa Monica survived by his wonderful daughter Danielle and a true great Angelino.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, as you know, on February 24th, a MetroLink train on the Ventura County line derailed after it crashed into a truck that was on the tracks. And I'm very sad to report that the engineer on that train, Glenn Steele, passed away this morning. And I'd like to ask that the city council adjourn in memory of Glenn Steele. Glenn was sixty-two years old. He was the longest-serving engineer in the entire MetroLink system. He was the most veteran of our engineers. He'd been with the railroad for forty years and was a beloved and respected member of the MetroLink family. And while the circumstances of the crash are still under investigation, I think it's safe to say that Glenn Steele, in command of that train, did everything that he could to avoid the crash and to save lives. And it's very sad that—the— well, the good news is that because of his actions, there was not a single passenger fatality on that very, very dramatic crash. And yet, because of a variety of measures that MetroLink has taken to try to reduce the impact of those crashes and absorb the energy and so on, we're very fortunate that not a single passenger was lost. But unfortunately, the man in charge, the engineer of that train, was lost to us. He was a very dedicated and hard-working employee of the system. He'll be very much missed. We don't have funeral arrangement information yet, but in the meantime, obviously, all of our heartfelt condolences are with his family, his friends, and all of his coworkers and the passengers that he served so well.
I'm continuing to look to my right. Now I go to the left, adjournment motions on the left side. I don't see any. Just, members, let's remind everybody to go out and vote today. This meeting is adjourned.